Reproducing and recording piano, the marriage of technology and tradition. Learn more at SteinwayCarolina.com.
Gun violence recently became the number one cause of death for children across America. But for black children, it's been at the top since 2006.
We now know that children have post-traumatic stress that is even worse than what some of the returning vitamins are experiencing.
I'm Megna Chakrabarti. That's on the next On Point.
On Point comes your way weekday evenings at 7 on Radio IQ. Taking a look at some of our weather now, there is still a frost advisory in effect until nine o'clock in the US for the Shenandoah Valley. That could be affecting some of our vegetation there. Look for cloud coverage today increasing, possibly a shower or two in the afternoon, mainly in southwest and south side Virginia. Lot of breeze moving across the state. Highs expected to be in the mid-sixties to the low-seventies. The Marketplace Morning Report is next.
A conversation on interest rates and the banking mess with a senior Federal Reserve official.
Marketplace Morning Report is supported by Byside from the Wall Street Journal, an independent commerce site designed to help consumers make smart decisions with their time and money. WSJ.com/Byside.
I'm David Brancaccio in New York. Top brass at the Federal Reserve make decisions that affect every woman, man, and child in America. We call it a central bank, but it's made up of 12 regions. One of those regions covers just about all of New England. I spoke to Susan M. Collins, President of the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston, about the inflation fight and the banking mess. President Collins, welcome.
Thank you. Delighted to be here.
Some of the remedy for inflation is higher interest rates, but the remedy is putting pressure on banks. Is this problem with some banks making it harder for your colleagues to fight inflation?
So what I would say about that is that these topics are very much interrelated. Overall, our banks are sound, they're resilient, they're well-capitalized, and of course, important to monitor. I do think that the recent stresses are quite likely to cause some financial tightening, and that's something that I factor in as I think about what appropriate monetary policy is.
That's really interesting. In other words, some of these stresses in the banking system will themselves be a drag on growth, and that could pull the correct direction on inflation?
They might. And so, you know, important to monitor the data and to watch how various institutions, how the economy is responding. But it is correct that some banks may choose to increase their liquidity a bit, perhaps tightening conditions for credit, and that would help to slow the economy. And of course, that's exactly what the Fed is doing as we work hard to bring inflation down, given the toll that inflation is taking on people and businesses.
Let's talk about how we watch over our banks, given what we've seen in recent weeks. In your view, was supervision adequate at these two banks?
I think that there were clearly some challenges that were not met in terms of bank decisions. As you may know, there is a kind of thorough review underway of what happened, and it will look at supervision and regulation. And I think it is premature to try to say what the findings for that will be. I will say that it's important, with a degree of humility, to take those findings to heart and really act on what's learned about what went wrong and how we can do things better.
And would you agree that there's work to do to understand the new technology, how social media can feed into bank runs, stuff like that?
Conditions certainly are evolving. We saw that the flows were much more, I mean, they were remarkable, how rapidly flows move. That's not something that we've really seen before, and that's certainly something to be examined and maybe part of the recommendations that come out. But again, I don't want to get out ahead of what we will see.
Susan M. Collins, President of the Boston Fed. And will all these higher interest rates end in recession? More on that with the Boston Fed chief on our homepage or Marketplace Morning Report podcast, if you missed that section on the air today. Now, to the price of energy, especially gasoline, with a surprise announcement last night that the oil producers cartel, OPEC, is going to cut production by over a million barrels a day starting next month. OPEC-plus members, especially Saudi Arabia, are unhappy with the drooping crude oil prices we've been seeing, given the banking crisis. Well, drooping no more. The price of crude traded here in New York is up 5.9%, over $80 a barrel. Marketplace's Nova Soffo is here with more.
And David, these cuts come on top of a previously announced reduction of 2 million barrels a day in output cuts. That was late last year, and it was the biggest reduction since the beginning of the pandemic shutdowns. Now, the OPEC-plus alliance has been implementing that cut and will reduce an additional 1 million barrels a day, as you mentioned, actually a bit more than that. And the big picture, though, is that it's, even the additional 1 million barrels a day is just a sliver of total daily output globally, which is currently at about 100 million barrels a day. So it's about 1% or so, and the cuts will take some time to implement, too, so they're not going to be felt all at once.
Yeah, and I'm watching, as we speak, oil prices up sharply. Is the cartel betting that will continue?
Clearly. That's definitely, appears to be what they want to see happen. The decisions that they are making come just a few days after OPEC released their latest average for oil prices. These are the prices that its member countries are getting out on the global market, and that average was around $77 a barrel. Clearly, they think that's too low, and analysts are expecting oil prices to rise substantially for the rest of the year because of OPEC's move.
Now, a few people listening pay wholesale for their oil. When would this percolate into what we pay retail at the pump?
That is what everyone wants to know, and of course, it's the hardest thing to predict because hanging over all of this is the threat of recession. If we fall into one, that could reduce demand for gasoline, and perhaps the OPEC's cuts won't have an impact on increased prices. According to AAA, though, gas prices are already up. They're currently averaging about $3.50 a gallon. By one analysis, they could go up by about another 50 cents or so a gallon by the summer, and that's accounting for both the usual increase we see when refineries switch to a summer blend and the effects of the output cuts, David.
Nova, thank you. And one way to put a hammerlock on one corner of the world of sports, a massive merger. The world wrestling folks are merging with the mixed martial arts peoples who create a company worth $21 billion. UFC Ultimate Fighting Championship is owned by the entertainment and talent agency conglomerate Endeavor, plus WWE. This becomes one big publicly traded firm.
Marketplace Morning Report is supported by UKG, an HR payroll and workforce management solution designed with people in mind to help make a fairy tale workplace a reality. UKG, our purpose is people. And by SoFi, with a SoFi high-yield savings account, members can earn more, plus deposits are FDIC insured. Learn more at sofi.com. Get your money right. SoFi Bank, N.A., Member FDIC.
Checking stocks, London's FTSE index is up seven tenths of a percent. Here, Dow futures are up three tenths of a percent, with Chevron stock up more than 4% in pre-market trading with that OPEC production cut. S&amp;P futures are down two tenths percent, Nasdaq futures are down nine tenths percent. And there must be a sense of deep unease among corporate employees at McDonald's this morning. The fast food corporation ordered all of its U.S. offices closed for three days starting today. Everybody works from home to await news of who is getting laid off. This means those layoff conversations will all happen remotely. In New York, I'm David Brancaccio.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the 9:00 AM session for April 3 city council informal session. I'll ask our clerk, Susan McCoy, to please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Pretty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Mayor Lee is late.
Thank you. A quorum is present. It's great to welcome all of you. Just as a reminder, the council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/ronokva. Council meetings are offered with closed captionings for the deaf or hard of hearing. We have several items for action this morning. The first is a communication from Mayor Sherman P. Lee, Sr., requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. A list of current vacancies is included with the agenda for this meeting, and I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So move.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the motion passes. The second is a communication from the city attorney requesting a closed meeting with legal counsel pertaining to probable or actual litigation, where such consultation and briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. I'll receive a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the motion passes. Items listed on the 2:00 PM council docket requiring discussion and clarification, are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none, are there any additional topics for discussion by members of council? All right, then, hearing none, I'm going to recess our council meeting and call on our new legislative committee chair, Councilmember Pretty, to lead us in our legislative committee.
Thank you. We'll continue recess. We'll get started about 10 minutes. We're getting the Zoom link set up for advance strategies.
Okay. All right, so we are in a recess for 10 minutes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right. So he probably.
I didn't want to miss it.
Well, then I will bring us out of recess.
Okay.
Can I do that?
You can do that.
All right. And we will move ahead with a briefing on parking spaces for persons with disabilities. Is that the briefing?
Yes.
All right, and I'll turn to you, city manager.
Thank you. In a few moments here, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Mann, and I think Laura Creamy might be assisting with this as well. So, you know, it's been our practice that with, where possible, with code, possible code amendments, we'll bring those forward first as a briefing, just to share with you sort of what's being thought about and the language associated with that particular ordinance. Answer any questions that you might have, make any adjustments, and then we will come back at a subsequent meeting with the actual action item. So there's no action on this today. Just want to bring it up to your attention. And this actually started with a conversation that I had with Mark Carey, who had come in talking about some of the challenges associated with those in our community that are able to drive but are actually disabled in some, in some fashion in the downtown parking. And if you've, many of us have been fortunate not to have to pay attention to this, but in our on-street parking, there are certain areas, very few areas, that are actually designated for, specifically for handicap parking in those areas. Otherwise, there are longer periods of time in which they can park, but otherwise, they basically are looking and competing, if you will, for the same parking spaces as everyone else, and also need to go to the pay station, actually register and pay as others would. So this proposal that Brian's going to share with you here will actually change that. This only is related to on-street parking, so this is not in our garages. The garages are different in that they have dedicated handicap parking spaces in locations that are appropriate as well. So again, we'll explain sort of what's in this. Certainly welcome any questions that you might have for Brian or for Laura, and certainly, again, Mark is here as well, can answer any questions that you might have for him as to what originated this idea and stuff as well. So with that, I'm going to let Brian give you the quick overview of it and answer any questions.
Morning, Mayor Lee and council. Yeah, thanks, Bob. So basically, what we're going to do here is just change the code or look to seek to change the code in a little bit. Where currently, the on-street handicap parking space is allowed for up to four hours of continuous parking, and what we're saying in this proposal will be that we're going to change that to up to 10, not to exceed 10 hours in a 24-hour period. So we've extended that or looking to extend that from four hours up to 10 hours, and that's just within a 24-hour period. The second change to this, and that would be for time spaces and metered spaces as well. So the second part has to do with the metered space is that we're also eliminating the need for somebody with a handicap placard to come up and register their plate at the meter. So they're not going to have to do that anymore. As you know, there's some logistic issues with, you know, with certain disabilities, that might be a hindrance to somebody, so we wanted to eliminate that hindrance. So that's just a real short and sweet synopsis of it. Laura, did you have anything as far as code-wise that we need to address?
I'm just here if you have any questions about the technical changes.
Mayor Lee, tough question. So are any other localities doing this? Would we be the first in Virginia?
I would have to check, Councilman Pretty. I'm not sure on that.
I don't know, Mark. I know Mark has done a little bit of research on this as well to try to find, and.
I don't know of anyone just offhand that has done that. Wouldn't it be appropriate for him to come up to the podium, just to make sure people are at home?
Sure, or we can take the microphone to him either, whichever is easiest.
Just to come up to the podium, some people at home will be able to hear you.
Basically, this, you know, this, a couple of quick things, too. This isn't going to change any, you know, nobody's going to be able to park in loading zones, fire zones, et cetera, so we're not changing the safety or that accessibility for the businesses and support we need for the businesses. I thought that would be great if Roanoke was the leader in this, that we became a leader in something that's an unintended barrier to access. Now, if I have a driver, just, I'll give you one example. If somebody were to drive me downtown, let's say I have somebody who volunteers for my church, should I hand them my debit card to walk up the block to use the machines? You know, so I think what we're doing is we're eliminating some barriers to access, and we're really plugging our adaptive community, which is a term I prefer, to, this is not your show. We're plugging them into the original intention of ADA, which was to mainstream, mainstream our disabled community into the social and economic mainstream. And I think that the wonderful thing about Roanoke is that I'm only one person away from those I need to talk to. I've talked to some of you all. Bob very graciously made plenty of time available, had done some pre-checking, et cetera. So any questions? I hope that's helpful. Stay.
And my question would probably be for the city manager. So if we are going to, you know, increase it to 10 hours, that would tie up the spaces, so we've got to be really creative, right, and looking for more additional spaces?
Yeah, I think, you know, part of the discussion we had early on with this, because the idea of the 10-hour limit is really to give, practically, that allows someone to use it for their entire day if they're working or otherwise.
Sure, sure.
But yet still create some amount of turnover so it doesn't become kind of a permanent space, if you will. And it also factors into how we do our parking enforcement, since these vehicles will not be registered in the system, the enforcement officers will actually have to identify that there's a placard, either through the license plate recognition system or by one of the hanging placards with it. But when we talk through this, you know, our belief, and we could be proven incorrect in this, is that while this is going to be a valuable opportunity, there are probably not going to be an overwhelming number of spaces used for this purpose. If it turns out that there are a lot indeed being used that way, then yes, we would have to look at how we would increase kind of the parking area and stuff. But at this point, we don't really think that there's going to be that many folks that actually will need to take advantage of this, and it, so it won't affect our overall parking operation. Same is true on the revenue side, too, because remember, and you'll hear this later today, parking is an enterprise, and so, you know, it is operated without benefit of taxpayer dollars going into it, that these are all self-sustaining, so it's the users of the system that pay for the system. But again, the revenue loss here is believed to be really negligible.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't be concerned about the revenue, as I would be getting folks into the mainstream. Like you said, that would be, that would be excellent, but I'm just wondering if at any point that it does become demanding, which would be a good thing, that we would be creative in coming up with additional space.
Yeah, and this still does not designate any additional spaces. It just basically turns all of the spaces into really more, more accessibility associated with it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Moon.
I just have a comment, then I have a question. I want to thank you, Bob, and you, sir, for opening up, and your idea for bringing it before the council to open up additional parking spaces, because I know now firsthand, when I had a foot injury and I had a boot, and I was trying to find spaces downtown to park, and walking was really difficult for me. So I could only imagine someone who is disabled 24/7, living with a day in, day out, and having to come downtown and trying to find somewhere to park, to do business or even to enjoy some entertainment, that would be really difficult for them, so thank you for that. I have a question with regards to B under Section 20-111518, and my question is for you, city manager, is where you mentioned that a vehicle may be parked or remain parked in a parking meter zone without initiating the meter's timing mechanism in accordance with the directions on the meter or multi-space meter during hours other than those, and this is my question, those designated by the city manager as hours during which such payment and deposits are required. Could you elaborate a little bit more on what would designate that time period?
Yeah, I'm probably going to let Brian answer that because he handles more of the operations piece of it, and we do occasionally change those.
Right, okay.
So we enforce parking from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and I think that's the answer to your question, and so we don't enforce after that, so that's the time that we enforce, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
So.
And on the meters, it is also on the weekends. Jamie, is that correct?
The weekend's open.
So Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
That's, that's when that provision is applicable, because outside of those hours, we don't do any enforcement.
Right, so, so I just want to understand, make sure the public understands, too, that the, those with disabilities will still be able to park between the 8 and the 5?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's what I mean.
For up to 10 hours.
This just didn't seem to clarify that.
In essence, we're saying they can park there.
Right.
For a long time.
Right.
The 10-hour provision allows us for the one 24-hour period, so we don't get people parking there continuously.
Right.
And then it would be back to your question, Councilman White Boyd, you know, we would run out of some spaces then, so we want to be able to enforce, too.
Right, I just didn't know if that, what this applied to when you had special events downtown.
No, this would be all the time.
Okay, that's what I need, thank you.
You're welcome.
And when would this ordinance take effect?
If, you know, we'll bring it back at your next meeting if everyone's comfortable with that, and we'll ask for approval at that point in time, and there'll be an effective date attached to it at that point, but effectively, as soon as we're able to put it into operations.
Okay, I just didn't know if you was looking at July or, you know, fiscal year.
No, there's really no reason for us to delay, except what's necessary to get the parking enforcement folks kind of familiar with the process and so on with it.
Okay.
And we'll be doing some community awareness associated with that as well to let folks know, because this is not a case where, since we're, since we're making something more permissive rather than restrictive, there won't be, there won't be signs displayed or put up anywhere, so we'll have to do some kind of awareness campaign so that folks will work. And we've talked with Mark about ways in which we can get that information out also.
And it's just, and it's just for downtown area only, not coming up this way to the ward, the municipal building?
It is, wherever we're doing controlled parking enforcement, so all of downtown, where we have timed parking or whether we have the meter parking on street, all of that is covered in it as well. The only thing it's not covering is where there's no restriction on parking currently, which we have some areas, obviously, in the edge of downtown or in the garages. That's not going to be affected by this.
So from Second Street even up to Fifth Street and down?
Yeah, wherever we have.
That's what I mean, I'm just trying to make sure I'm clear.
Yeah, because, you know, once you get toward the, on the outer edge of downtown, you start moving away from the enforced parking, and at that point, of course, there are no restrictions in place.
Because when we refer to downtown, I'm always thinking downtown.
Yeah, over to Wells Avenue, towards Gainsborough, and then the outskirts on the other side, so that's kind of our area.
Right, that's what I was just trying so the public can understand.
We have to remind our people with handicap spaces, they have to have that placard. That's the most important thing. We run into this a lot, that sometimes they'll hand the placard back and forth to a relative or a family member, and they don't have that placard, and that's where we run into issues. So we'll have to make sure that we do, what Bob says is communicate, especially now, that we'll be more liberal with it, that we make sure that placard is displayed where it needs to be as far as the code says.
Right, right. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, then I'll go down.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Mark. One, after Mark, Mark and I talked about this, I think I reached out to you, Brian, and the city manager about kind of mapping the, where the available spaces are in the garages, and, which we, I think we have ample of those.
Yes.
And then downtown, and I was concerned when I originally saw the downtown mapping because there seemed to be like a circle that there weren't many.
Right.
But this opens that up, I think, in a, in a much more innovative way than adding specific spaces that people are searching for. But I was wondering if, as we, if we adopt this ordinance, as we push this out, if we can remind people who are looking for dedicated spaces in the garages or on the streets, if we could, I don't know if there's a way to bring that together in a map or to just make people aware of existing spaces along with this.
We have the, how many spaces are in each garage, but I think I can get with our parking contractor, and we can come up with a GIS map and put it on the website. That'll just highlight those spaces. That should be pretty easy to come up with.
spaces that people are searching for. But I was wondering if, as we, if we adopt this ordinance, as we push this out, if we can remind people who are looking for dedicated spaces in the garages or on the streets, if we could, I don't know if there's a way to bring that together in a map, or to just make people aware of existing spaces along with this?
We have the, how many spaces are in each garage, but I think I can get with our parking contractor, and we can come up with a GIS map and put it on the website. That'll just highlight those spaces. That should be pretty easy to come up with.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a comment to say thank you, Mark, and Brian, and Bob, for working so much on this. Parking is a topic that comes up a lot for members on councils. It's one of the things that we have control over. Remind the people at home that this is focused on something that's more permissive, and we're focusing just on this for now. We do want to solicit their feedback, but this is all that we're looking at changing with parking for the time being.
Yes, except for, later in the budget discussion, we'll be talking about the fee increases to cover the security costs, independent, separate item. But as far as any changes in the ordinance, if you will, associated with parking, this is the only item.
And the public hearing on that will be later in April.
Well, it'll be tied with the budget approval as we move forward, yeah.
Anybody else? Any question? Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate this. This really puts us out in front as a city of Roanoke, as a progressive, mindful community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go. This way. All right, at this point, then, we will recess. Are we ready for, is Advanus with us now?
I don't know.
Do we know?
Okay.
On the Zoom.
Are we going to bring Zoom up? Okay, thank you. I'll wait, I'll wait to recess until we know. Actually, we'll just go ahead and take a brief recess until we know that Advanus is with us, and then we'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Our chair and vice chair in Orlando at the national meeting, I'll hold down for.
Thank you for being here. Okay. Are we back? Everyone's here?
Do we, do we want to bring them up larger on that screen, or...I'm not sure who all is here.
They're just in a small corner.
It'd be nice to see everybody if they're all, if it's just Kathy.
Yep, exit minimum.
There we go. There's Laura.
There we go. Wonderful. All right, well, I'm going to call the legislative committee meeting to order. I'll ask the clerk if she'll call the roll.
Mayor Lee?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Pretty?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Veloson?
Here.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Here.
Dr. Jamison?
Here.
And we have a quorum. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here today. This is my first meeting presiding over as chair as the legislative committee, and Trish Whiteboy, our councilwoman, will serve as vice chair of the legislative committee going forward for this year. I want to thank Mayor Lee and council for confirming my appointment to that position. I think that brings some experience that will help us go through a legislative agenda, hopefully put forward some items that might be more productive for the city of Roanoke, and take a different perspective on things. I want to thank our, my vice chair, Councilwoman Whiteboy, for meeting last week to go over an advanced schedule that I'll go over in a minute, that'll allow us to adopt the legislative agenda earlier in the year, so that we have an opportunity to present this to our delegation, and they have time to consider these requests before the filing deadlines are reached on their end. I'll also mention that we have our legislative liaisons, our lobbyist Kathy Bercher and Laura Bateman on the line with Advanus Strategies. They are here today to go over one of the items that is on the agenda and provide any questions that we have and technical assistance. I also want to thank former council member and the last chair of this committee, Bill Beszich, for all the work that he did on this committee. I found out in the planning meeting, and even this morning, as we were trying to set up the Zoom link for our legislative liaisons, that Bill did a lot of the work himself for this committee. And as chair, I expect to share that burden with my vice chair and everyone else who's present, so that more people are clued in on the work that we're doing and understand what we're putting forward, because this legislative agenda isn't any of our single legislative agendas, or the things that each of us want, as much as it is something that's collective and representative of the whole city of Roanoke, our departments, and of council, and the people who live in it. Recognize our secretary, Leisha Cook, who will be taking minutes. She's with the city attorney's office, and I'll go over something later in the meeting that we might need to cover on that aspect and some cleanup in the code. She will be taking minutes. We don't have minutes to adopt for this meeting, but we will in the future. Another change will be going forward as chair of this committee is that on each agenda, you will see a space for public comments. This will be the time that if anyone in the public has any feedback on anything that's on the agenda for that day, or something that's been considered in the past, as it relates to the legislative committee, to come and speak before us, before we take action on any items. We'll follow the same rules that council has present. If there's a certain number of speakers, we'll have five minutes each. If there's more than a certain number of speakers, then we'll only have three minutes each. But I also want to remind the people at home that if you don't have the opportunity to get here at nine in the morning, that we do on the first Monday of every month, there are other opportunities to provide public feedback. You can either email any member of council or this committee to have something entered into the record. You can show up at a different meeting of council and just speak on the general item for public comments, and we will take that into consideration in this committee somewhere in the future. There will also be an opportunity for public participation on October 16th at 7:00 p.m. before we adopt the agenda. With that, I'm going to go over the schedule briefly. Right now is April 3rd. Today, we're going to go over the past adopted 2023 legislative program, its relative success, the governor's vetoes and amendments that have been forward, if there's anything relevant for the city council to take a position on. In May, I believe we're going to do more on our school board items at that time, seeing that Allen and most of our school board members can't be present today. But we possibly might even have an opportunity to discuss anything as it relates to the budget, in the event that the general assembly hasn't adopted one yet, in May closer to that time. July 3rd is noted on here as a date for a meeting. That potentially might be canceled, as council has typically considered this a holiday, as it's so close to July 4th, but we'll discuss that more and make a determination at our May meeting. That will also be roughly the deadline with which departments will be able to submit items to consideration to the city manager. That way, at our August meeting, we can have a full discussion about what items we want to include on our legislative agenda, move forward with, potentially refer to other advocacy groups. Then we will do our work through September, refining the programs some more, and in October 5th, we will present this to our general assembly delegation. This will give them time to give us feedback and consideration before we make a full recommendation and adoption for council to consider on October 16th. And seeing that the governor's budget comes out later in the year, and there are other items that always come up, there'll be opportunities for us to change things, but this is a rough schedule that we will go forward with.
Mr. Pretty, excuse me, just a minute. That is October the 2nd rather than the 5th. We're going to change that.
October 2nd, not October 5th.
Right.
We will correct that on agenda items going forward. With that, we will move into public comments, and I know this is first meeting, so I'm not sure that there's anyone present. Has anyone in the public signed up to speak on anything for the agenda today?
None signed up.
Okay, I didn't expect so. Well, hearing none, we will move on to item four on the agenda, the review of the 2023 legislative program. And then we'll talk briefly about governor's vetoes and amendments. At this time, I will recognize whichever volunteer wants to go, either Kathy Bercher or Laura Bateman. And as I go through, bring up each item on our agenda, I'll ask if they can talk to us about what was the relative success of that item, who introduced it, if anybody did, where is it now, basically at that point on it. And with that, we will move into it. And there are links in the agenda for fellow council members, or anyone in the audience who wants to be able to follow along with where we are. So the first one was the civil penalties A1 as it relates to fire code violations. If either, you could just give a brief synopsis of that item and where it was.
Good morning, everyone. Appreciate being with you. Kathy Bercher with Advanus Strategies. Laura Bateman is also on the line. Who can jump in? We did, I just want to make sure everyone knows, too, we did send, right after session, when they adjourned, a detailed report. So if we breeze through something and you want to know more information, we did include coming a full assessment at that time where all the legislation landed. Obviously, as you all have heard, the governor has made recommendations in some amendments, three vetoes on legislation, we'll speak to those. None of impact to bills on the legislative program, but some that we did want to highlight. I did send along a presentation as well that we'll make sure you all get. It has, again, more details on the legislation and also some other legislation of interest outside of the legislative program that we thought the city council would really want to make sure they took a look at. So House Bill 607 did not pass, that was related to the penalties for fire code violations, and that did not pass the House of Delegates. We did not have a Senate patron for that, though.
Thank you. Item A2, the limit smoking to 100 feet for parks, recenters, playgrounds, and sports fields.
And that was legislation that we were not able to find a House or Senate patron to take up. So there was no legislation on that this session.
Thank you. For my fellow members of council, if you're trying to locate the email with which the final report was sent, it was around February 27th or 28th. And if anyone has questions throughout this presentation, please don't hesitate to let me know, to be recognized. Item A3, the increased fees for derelict buildings, registration, and civil penalty increase.
Senator Hachme out of the city of Richmond, who had a similar item on their legislative program, carried that bill. It failed, it failed to pass. It's passed by indefinitely. However, there is a letter that has been drafted to have that, to the chair, for both Senator Hachme and the House, the House patron, who's slipping me Laura right now, who the House patron was, if we had a House patron, maybe we didn't. I apologize for that. But there is a letter going to the chairman that this be studied by, it's studied during the interim between now and next session with recommendations to go forward. Laura, you look like you wanted to jump in.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say, there were a couple of other cities that had a similar sort of item in their legislative programs, but the general assembly, the House and the Senate were both fairly consistent in pointing that issue to the Virginia Housing Commission, as Kathy mentioned. And I think they'll do a deeper dive. It clearly represented an issue that other cities are experiencing. And so I am hopeful that perhaps the 2024 session will act on that issue.
And as we go-
And I'm hopeful, too, when we finish kind of running through the legislative program for Roanoke, giving a brief update on those bills that are headed to the Housing Commission for study, because significant, potential significant impact to local governments, and hopefully on housing and housing affordability across the Commonwealth.
So I expect that you all will be following that commission during the interim, reporting back to us. And thank you. Item A4, the giving local code enforcement officers the ability to cite, remove, and knock overable the vehicles.
House Bill 2191, patron by Delegate Sam Ruzul, passed the House and Senate and was signed by the governor. It will become effective July 1st.
Thank you so much. And I believe we had Chris Chittum and other members of city administration who presented on that and were helpful in getting it passed. Item A5, giving local code enforcement the authority to bar trespassers, squatters from the property when the owners are not available or not involved under the guidance of maintenance code official.
And again, that was Delegate Ruzul, House Bill 2186. And I'm going to get to the outcome in just a second, but I did want to mention that, given, given we have a divided general assembly here in Richmond, there was a whole lot of sense of, we're going to kill everything of theirs, they're going to kill everything of ours. In fact, I walked out of the Pocahontas Building with a leader in the House, I won't name names, who said, we'll do that and we'll both get nothing. This bill, Senate Bill 2186, was a real example of Republicans and Democrats working together. This bill originally went to House Courts of Justice. Ultimately, through four variations of the bill, if you were tracking this, Delegate Rob Bell really, really worked with Delegate Ruzul to get this bill to a place where it could proceed and would be in the appropriate section of code. And so ultimately, this was truly a team approach from the members of Courts of Justice to position this bill in a really good place. And so, you know, for folks who do the kind of work that I do, and Laura does, and many of you work with, it was nice to see this effort to work together, and ultimately have the report. In a different section where it started, but implications are all exactly what the city council asked for. That bill passed and was signed by the governor.
Thank you so much. I will move on to item A6, some of the sub items of criminal justice issues. The first one, restoring primary enforcement on critical traffic and safety, allowing the police to stop people for the following offenses, and I won't read the offenses out.
And again, in the spirit of what I just said, with divided government and just different political alignments in the House and Senate on many of these issues, these were challenging issues kind of up and down the line this session. To A6, we had, or A6, first Delegate Campbell and Senator Steph both had bills. Neither bill failed, neither bill proceeded. Both were killed in committees, and we were not able to move any legislation in that category.
Thank you. And while one of them didn't make it out of committee, the other made it over from the House of Delegates, and was just unsuccessful in the same judiciary committee on a 9-6 vote. What about the, item two, restoring the presumptions against bail?
Sorry, I missed your question.
Moving on to the next item, restoring the presumptions against bail.
And again, and Laura, I want to make sure I have that one correctly. There was presumptions against, that was Delegate Williams' bill, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, House, yeah, House Bill 1365. I have a spreadsheet, and I just wanted to make it, make sure it was lined up the right way. And Senate Bill 1229, and again, this is, this is, again, aligned by party oftentimes, although there was a couple of Democrats who sat that one out. Neither bill failed to move forward and pass.
And I'll just ask them for you to cover the rest, three through six, on those items. It appears that one bill was successful of those four.
Yes. House Bill 1792 did move forward, and Senate Bill 1303 also moved forward. And so again, some good news here, and I apologize, I want to pull up my notes on one bill. This had, again, not necessarily as far as everyone wanting to go, but again, making sure we're ensuring that folks are taken care of, particularly, I mean, on temporary detention in hospitals. And so those were some of, those were frankly the bills that we were able to move forward.
Thank you. We'll move into item B, local government, the clerk of court circuit retainage fees. This would have been a budget amendment.
Yes, that was in budget as well. And so again, I'll talk about budget when we get to kind of where we are in session. And so there's a budget item here in the Senate.
Okay. The charter change for council elections in November, B8.
Again, interesting, what we saw, this one did not, it did pass the Senate unanimously, or 39 to 0, not unanimously, as we noted in our notes when that bill moved forward, as it went over to the House. This seemed to be a subcommittee that was not prepared to move a charter bill forward, and so that, this bill failed to report when it got over to the House in the first committee it went to, on an early Friday morning, if I recall.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mayor Lee.
Where does that leave Austin parents of our charter? We had difficulty with it.
That means that our charter still reflects that elections would be held in May, but seeing that the state code has already been updated for all localities, and we had already adopted an ordinance prior to that, moving our elections to November, our elections are held in November, and will continue to do so at this time. This particular piece of legislation, while last year there was a House version that Delegate Ruzul carried, he was successfully getting through, moved over to the Senate. It did not make it through the Senate because it required a two-thirds vote in order to be effective, and we weren't able to reach that threshold. Whereas this year, we did not have a House version, we had a Senate version that was carried by Senator Edwards. It made it through committee. And a special thank you to Laura Bateman, who showed up to, I believe, speak on this item, when we couldn't get Senator Edwards out of a committee that he needed to be in at the- that he needed to be in at the same time, and ultimately went to the floor. It was not unanimous because there was a particular local senator who is not Senator Edwards that was not present when the vote was taken, so it was neither for or against this particular item. But when it did move over to the House, they did not move it out of committee. So we will have to continue to seek to make this change in the future. I would recommend going forward that we might consider it, coupled with other charter changes, where germaneness requires that each piece of legislation has to be singularly focused, because it would be focused as a charter change. We could do multiple items at once, and I believe there are some other things as it relates to the clerk of court that we do want to move through that might make us more successful in the retainage fees aspect as well.
Mr. Priddy, if I may-
Yes, Vice Chair.
Let us be clear that if the charter changes were common during that time, because there were a lot of charter changes, so we just need, I mean, there were some other issues that were attached with our charter change, going back to some other ordinances that we had done as far as appointing people during, I guess, I'm not sure how to even phrase that, but, but there were some other issues connected with that. So we just need to be clear that this is not, we're not asking for anything extraordinary, that they had done, a ton of them during that session, and this one just became a little bit more political than it should have been, and hopefully we will be more prepared moving forward.
I believe so. And Kathy and Laura, am I right that there were a couple of other charter changes that sought to do the same thing, that met the same fate in the House of Delegates?
Correct. Yes, absolutely. And again, there were also charter changes not related to the election that did move forward, so clearly, the take that the city council has on this is spot on.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, and unfortunately, I think about a quarter of both chambers of the General Assembly will be changing next year, so we'll get to lobby a lot of new faces. All right, any other questions on this? Before we move on to the next item. We'll move on to B9, the alternatives to publish legal notices in the newspaper, standardized the frequency and length of time for certain notices.
And Senator Edwards, House Bill, Senate Bill 1151, it did pass the House and Senate, was signed by the governor. It was amended, and I think the need of the legislation that the city council was hoping for around alternatives to the requirements to publish legal notices in newspapers was removed. The alignment around frequency and some consistency there is what remained in the bill, but a study was added. The co-commission will review this section and make recommendations to the General Assembly. So as we often see in Virginia, and I know you all are fully aware, sometimes we, you know, we ask for two steps forward, we get one and a half, and that's kind of how I would view this one, but appreciate Senator Edwards' work on this one.
Thank you. It's my understanding that there are certain sections they didn't cover, and the co-commission might continue to study this a little bit further. But it is a rather large bill, if anyone wants to read it, it's a couple hundred pages. It's a lot of fun. I'm sure our city attorney has read it, or he's gonna have to before it goes into effect. Thank you for that. What about item B10? The, making the Transportation Museum a state agency.
The Transportation Museum had both, built in both the House and the Senate, Senator Edwards had the Senate bill, Delegate Head had the House version of the bill. They had accompanying budget amendments as well. Neither bill actually passed the General Assembly. However, both the House and Senate budgets do include half a million dollars for the Transportation Museum. The House version of the budget item does include a study around making the Transportation Museum a state agency. Again, I'll talk about budget in just a minute and where we are, but the news both the House and Senate, and so Delegate Head and Senator Edwards were able to get funding included in the budget that they proposed and passed into both bodies. We'll just have to see where the negotiators land.
Well, and the version that passed the Senate contained the identical language about the study, it just was unsuccessful in one of the House committees, but it seems to still be alive in the budget item. And the final piece of the budget amendment as it relates to aid to localities with police departments.
And again, Senator Edwards had $2 million in the Senate budget. There is no additional funding included in the House budget. I'll talk, again, I'll talk about budget really quickly in just a second. There were significant amounts of revenues each body had to spend, given some policy choices around tax, tax changes and tax cuts and relief. And because of that, the Senate version included this $2 million, certainly far less than we know our localities need, but at least, you know, grateful for Senator Edwards being one of the, if not the only one, perhaps the only member of the Senate that included any amendments to fund the localities with police departments. So we shall see on budget.
Thank you. Mark, do you have any questions, anything, before we move on?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just had a quick question about the Transportation Museum.
Yeah.
This is the second year that we've tried to get this through. Is there something more that we can be doing other than, you know, I know that the Regional Commission and other groups have, you know, signed letters stating that they support this initiative, we feel it's gonna be an important initiative for RONOC. So what can we do to continue to try and push that?
Thank you, I'm glad you asked. It's amazing what I can get done when I wake up at 6:00 in the morning. So what Councilmember Velosen is referring to, if you will, I'm gonna pass to the City Manager, if you'll pass to other copies that direction. Peter serves on the RONOC Valley Allegheny Regional Commission, which did consider a resolution back in February that was supportive of this item, and it was sent to budget conferees. I'm sorry, members of the Van Nuys Strategies, because I've not shared a copy of this with you all yet. I believe the city attorney, and I believe you, Cook, should know about its contents. Back in February, I had a resolution drafted that would go to the conferees, and it was mirrored after the work that the RONOC Valley Allegheny Regional Commission put together. It's just, it's essentially like sending a letter to the budget conferees, reafferring that we would like to see a study. We're understanding that the funding portion is separate, they haven't given their particular reasons for other, not moving forward or taking action to fund it separately as one-time items. This would seek to urge both the House and the Senate to include this in their budget conference prior to adoption. I will note, it does have slight differences from the resolution that was considered by the Allegheny Regional Commission. The RVARC, the one that they passed, theirs was directed to be sent to the Secretary of Transportation and the members of the Commonwealth Transportation Board, while I understood that that may have made sense at the time. Because this would be an agency that's considered an educational institution and underneath the Secretary of Education, this is instead directed for a copy to be sent to the Secretary of Education and the budget conferees in our local delegation. And then I was gonna share a copy with the Regional Commission, just for them to have for their records. If there's a recommendation, move forward with this, which then it would not be considered until this afternoon at the very least on the agenda, because there are only recommendations from this committee. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Just a comment. I appreciate you bringing this forward. I know, as Peter had said, we did discuss this in the county, as well as the RONOC Valley Allegheny Regional Commission had, had adopted one, and I had a brief discussion with the manager that at some point, we would like to see this come before council for consideration. So I am glad you have brought it before us. Thank you.
Well, thank you. On that, is there, is there a motion on anything at this time to make a recommendation, or will we do that later in the meeting? I'm gonna ask the Parliament.
You can do it right now and just have a motion to add this to the agenda.
I'll approve.
Looks like Councilman Cobb may have a question.
I just had a clarif, a question of clarification. I appreciate that this is being sent to the Secretary of Education. Is there a reason that it couldn't also be sent to the Secretary of Transportation?
No, we could also send them a copy. It's just when this bill was initially drafted, and this was under the Northman administration, we had a meeting with the Secretary of Transportation at the time, Secretary Valentine, and at the end of that conversation, and this is for the prior administration, they said that they would be supportive of those efforts, but because they have no purview over a state agency, that they would refer their recommendation to the Secretary of Education, and that any work would have to go through their policy office.
Okay.
So would you like to make friendly amendment to send a copy as well?
No, I just, I would just ask that we also send a copy of this resolution to the Secretary of Transportation. I don't know that it needs to be an amendment to the measure.
Then I approve the motion, that this be presented before the council at the 2:00 meeting.
Second.
Oh, go ahead, Trish.
You got it, you got it.
Moved by Committee Member Moon, seconded by Vice Chair White Boyd. The clerks, please call the roll. Are there any questions for Mark and the audience before we move forward?
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Priddy?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Velosen?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
And Mr. Kathy.
Aye, and the resolution is recommended to be offered at the council meeting this Kathy and Laura, is there anything you'd like to go over on the budget before we move over into vetoes and amendments?
Yeah, quick, one quick thing I will mention on the Transportation Museum, it was interesting during committee, committee presentations on the legislation, there were members of the House in particular that mentioned that they had museums of transportation in their areas or their districts, and why would they not be included or not be the official museum of transportation? So I just wanted to mention that. We had to inform some members that, you know, this is, the RONOC museum is the Virginia Museum of Transportation. And so, just something to think about as you look at strategy around, you know, both hopefully a work group, but also moving forward to have that designation. Just wanted to mention that. But can we move on to budget now?
And I believe members of the work group and the transportation have reached out to those other museums to find ways that they'll be able to work together going forward.
Correct. Yep.
You'll move into the budget.
All right, so state budget, we are, we continue to be in paths or stalemate. I will mention, as, again, we included in that report, and appreciate the timing on that, here at the end of February, the interim, the 25th, I believe we sent it out the next day, included information on what they adopted as the skinny budget, which was officially the conference report on the state budget. Frankly, it was a series of four technical items. One in particular was using AirQuest a little bit to fix the funding calculation error as an Department of Education. That became, that was raised in December with a calculation tool established by the department that school divisions use to draw down the dollar amounts they will receive in each category, overestimating. And it was related to the sales taxes and the grocery tax components that were rolled back and how those were calculated. It did overestimate for every school division in the Commonwealth how much funding they would receive from state funding. What the General Assembly did was make technical updates, mostly related to increases in student enrollment. So that increased most school divisions' dollar amount, and then they added an additional $4.6 million to fill the leftover hole, so that no school division in the Commonwealth received less than was told to them using the calc tool. And so, again, while it was a $201 million, we'll call it a mistake, over the biennium, this, for this fiscal year '23, school divisions will be operating on a budget that is whole from the standpoint of the numbers they were given in December. Keeping in mind, if they, and they all, most of them have seen increases in student enrollment, any of those divisions that were hopeful to see additional state funding based on that number, that was rolled into the fix. And so, it may not be a whole to many school divisions, but that's part of what was included in the skinny budget. Aside from that technical, just technical updates, we continue to be in our paths. We have continued to hear that they, we will likely not see a budget until after the June primaries. We are in the middle of a biennial budget here in Virginia, and so there is no risk of fiscal cliff on June 30th when our fiscal year ends, because we do have a two-year spending plan. And so, if we don't have a budget adopted by June 30th, our second-year spending plan would just revert to that which was adopted during the last session. And that, you know, that certainly gives, you know, some comfort to those of us who operate in the state government, but at the same time, significant revenues and policy decisions to be made. The biggest place of disagreement right now is around $1 million, the governor proposed, and the House also included in their budget, around tax reform and tax cuts. The last number I have heard is that the Democrats in the Senate are insisting on about $650 million that would be included in that $1 billion, to instead go towards funding state programs, including public education and health services. So while on paper they're still about $1 billion apart, the negotiators have got to about $650 million apart. It's my understanding that they are taking a break right now, and will reconvene hopefully additional negotiations. But again, would not, would not be surprised to not see a budget until after the June 16 primaries.
Are we expecting potentially a budget still before July? And I believe you mentioned this briefly, that this wouldn't be the same as the federal government, in the event that we didn't adopt a budget by July 1st, we wouldn't anticipate running into shutdowns, whether they perceive there, because we have already adopted a budget for the upcoming year, or just lead uncertainty into expenditures for most of the year.
Yes, absolutely, yes. So there's no risk, like the federal government of a shutdown, we would close out fiscal year '23 on June 30th, begin fiscal '24 on July 4, July 1st, but with this spending plan, if there's no budget, with the spending plan that was adopted last session, as the 2022-24 biennial budget. So the good news is in a two-year budget, for sure, right now.
Is there a-
But I believe we'll have a budget. Again, if we're not gonna see anything until after the primaries, it's gonna be tight at best, but the June, the June 30th date is not as, it's not like the federal government, it's different here in Virginia this year.
Is there a time in history that you remember that we, that there was not a budget by July 1st? I can ask Senator Edwards later for his history.
It is my understanding this would be a first time.
Okay. Hopefully they'll get anything done. Does anybody have any questions on those items before we move forward?
I got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mayor Lee.
For the City Manager, how does that affect us as we go forward?
The, in terms of the budget approval, most, most significantly introduced is just uncertainty. Probably the best example of that is, there are competing proposals for increases in compensation for comp board eligible employees. I think the, the governor's proposal included, I think, a 5% and the General Assembly has a 7% increase, so that's one area of kind of that uncertainty. And then, of course, we receive a significant amount of funding from the state for things like DSS and others. It doesn't put those, as just mentioned, doesn't put those dollars at risk, but it certainly makes us and our ability to advise you on the adoption of a budget more challenging, because we don't know what those may or may not include. And as has been the case in the past, there are always things through this process that come up, both, sometimes revenue, often expenditures, that no one was anticipating. So that's probably the, the largest impact, is just sort of the introduced uncertainty associated with it. And we won't be unique, every, every locality is dealing with that.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, I can put on my old school board attorney hat. They, the school board will be impacted tremendously by this. It's something we've been through before, where we've had to adopt a budget and then re-adopt a budget for schools based upon state funding, but that is a significant portion of the school board's budget. So that's where you'll see a great deal of change.
And you all prepare for that, Mr. Chairman?
We are, we have to be, we have the choice.
Okay.
It is out of our hands, but we have got a great financial staff who is, who's taking that into consideration.
It sounds like we just might have a couple amendments around the budget going forward after it's adopted.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from council at this time? Okay, move on to, are there any vetoes that are relevant for us to consider? There are only three, and based on my cursory review, I didn't see anything particularly related to Russell's locality.
Agree, and I know that the N L will be having a conference call, I think later this week, Laura will shake her head or not, or promising something, but hopefully they are. But again, she and I have been in conversations around the N L positions, and to your point, it looks like as of now, no positions needed. Although, it's always interesting to read the reasons why vetoes happen, so I would encourage taking a look at those and making sure you kind of, because it gives us a sense of, of the thought process of this administration.
Thank you. What about as it relates to amendments, the recommendations that the governors put forward on legislation? I went through, initially I didn't see many, there are potentially two or three I think that might be relevant.
One I wanted to point out in particular, because it was a good bill that, I'm trying to flip my notes on the right page, I apologize. And it was, it was Senator McPite's, Senate Bill 1453, about automated external regulators that passed. The governor amended the bill and has asked that the Department of Education include on their website foundations and groups that would be able to help school divisions who are currently needing this new requirement, where they will meet the need for AGs in all school buildings, groups that would be able to help them meet that requirement. So again, we would want to make sure that we work with the Compressor Shock Foundation to have them included, if that makes sense for them. Again, we know that Doctors Karen and Jack Perkins have worked really hard on this legislation over the years, so getting their foundation included on that website would be important, I would assume. And certainly, it can be- And certainly, it can be incredibly helpful to our school divisions.
Is there anything you wanted to say, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I would just concur with that. I think there is a lot of momentum, not only in the state, but also nationally with the incident that took place with the Buffalo Bills player. AEDs are really critical. We've got a homegrown foundation right here that's taking the lead on this. And so, this is a great way to advance this forward.
Thank you.
And I will mention, when this bill came forward, I did talk with Dr. Seaver. And it's my understanding that Roanoke City Public Schools already need this requirement.
Wonderful, thank you. If anyone can hear, Mark confirmed that. Any other items?
The only other item where there was amendment, and again, VML sent out a really great legislative bulletin with information and links to all of the amendments and proposals and their take on each. Senator Rump did have around community development projects. There was an amendment there specifically to ensuring some clarity around these are Main Street districts and define, give some definitions to Senator Rump's bill around the business improvement and recruitment districts. That would be, you know, something to look at, but again, I don't believe a position would be necessary. That was the one of the list of amendments, other than the McPike AED bill ensuring that we include shocking compression. Senator Rump's bill is the only other one where I thought you all should at least take a look. I don't recommend, or I don't believe you need to take a position, but wanted to point that one out.
And I would ask that our committee member, Voloson, maybe reach out to our local business improvement districts and follow up with them on this particular item, and send a Bill 956, just to ask them if they have any particular position on it. And I know you've had more conversations with them recently. If you could report back to me, we don't have to make a recommendation today. The resolution that was adopted last year gives the authority to the chair and/or the vice chair, as long as it has the concurrence of the city manager, to take a position on legislation that's not specifically in our legislative agenda. If you could just get us back a note on what their thoughts are on this amendment. That way, we could communicate that to them to potentially support or oppose. I do have a question for advance. There's only one other item that I saw that I had some interest and wasn't sure if there's relation to us. It has to do with the Transit Ridership Incentive Program that was sponsored by Senator, then Senator Jennifer McClellan, now Congresswoman, and Senator Jeremy McPike. And the governor's amendment, this fund was originally supposed to direct available funds for local programs, but as it related to zero emission bus fleets and infrastructure. And the governor's recommendation that was put forward strikes out transition to zero emissions and instead focuses on safety, replacing most of that zero emission language with language that says, "On improving crime prevention and public safety for transit passengers, operators, employees." I understand that safety for our transit drivers has been an issue that's come up both locally and across the Commonwealth. But I didn't know if this council has any thoughts or concerns as it relates to changing the intent of this legislation from its focus on zero emission buses to that for safety. And if there are any thoughts from council members, or if advance strategy has any input as it relates to that. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, a couple of responses. One is, I think this would be an interesting thing for the Transit Company Board to discuss. We obviously have, through grant funding, purchased three electric vehicle buses. Because of production delays, we're probably two years out from receiving those. But we have the infrastructure in place, so I think we've got to be realistic about the length of time it would take for zero emission buses, if ever. I just don't know how realistic that is in the world of transit right now. But I do know we've taken extra precautions locally to make sure that transit drivers are safe and protected. But I think it would be good to review that with the board and then possibly make some recommendations back to council.
Do you know when the board meets next?
Yes, our next meeting is in May, I believe.
With the next meeting, so these will be voted on on April 12th. So I'd ask if you could reach out to someone with leadership there to maybe get their informal opinion.
Sure.
And potentially also, if you could reach out to the Bus Riders Advocacy Group of Roanoke, meets on the first Thursday of every month at the Gainsborough Library at 5:30. And while I know that they're focused on transit advocacy, I'll leave that up to you to decide if you want to seek out their opinion as it relates to this particular item. Just report back to the chair and vice chair of this committee, since there won't be time for us to have another meeting before these are voted on. Do we need a motion?
In the meantime, we're checking with the Virginia Transit Association to see what, you know, tact they're going to be taking on that bill, and we'll let you know.
Great. It would be helpful to me to, and I, which bill number is it?
Senate Bill 1326.
All right. I'll look into that. Thank you.
I believe that is all the amendments that I wanted to go over, unless anybody else saw any during their research. No? Okay. Move on from any actions they're from to other business. This will mirror likely what you see during the regular committee meetings for motions and inquiries from other members of the committee. I would like to raise one item just for our city attorney. The Section 2-304, Paragraph A of our city code says that the, I have my amendments in front of me. Basically, the city clerk is responsible as the secretary of this committee. As I know, an operation, seems like the bill was doing pretty much everything it could while Alicia's been doing the work behind it. Because this committee is separate from city council, not that we consider anything this afternoon, potentially at the next meeting two weeks from now, that way we could adopt any formal changes on the section of code prior to the next legislative committee meeting in May. That way, we're operating appropriately under the Freedom of Information Act and transferring that responsibility to there. It doesn't, I don't know what language you want to come up with, saying either a member of the city attorney's office or someone just appointed and confirmed by the legislative committee, but that way we can just clean up that section of code somewhere going forward. Are there any motions and queries from anyone on the committee here today? Okay, lovely silence. Well, before we adjourn, I'll just remind people of our schedule going forward. On May 1st, we will go over more of the school board items, their relative success. Hopefully, we'll have some kind of update on the budget at that time. If we don't, we'll have to wait moving forward. The July meeting will likely be canceled, but that will remain the deadline for departments and potentially advisory boards to get us opinions. But the vice chair, White Boyd, and I are going to meet with the city manager, discuss what that process would look like if we open that up to any of our advisory boards. But I would say by August, if there are any issues that committee members on this committee want to be considered, that we bring those forward at that time, no later than, so that they can make it into our agenda for consideration. In September, on October 2nd, we'll make, no, we discussed this already. We thought it was October 2nd for the delegation, but we're out of town, so it is October 5th.
Let me stay correct on that. VML will not meet until the 6th.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Now we're back on October 2nd.
And I was going to bring that, so council can either meet on the 2nd or they can still meet on the 5th. Since it's in the measure that was adopted, setting forth their schedule, it put in October the 5th. But council can, you know, well, we could have it amended to put it back to the 2nd, or you could still meet on the 5th.
There hasn't been a measure done for VML representatives and that date yet, so we're still, we're still good.
Yeah, but the VML starts for the mayor's institute on the 6th, right? VML meeting on the 8th.
So we're good with the 2nd.
We will present to the delegation in early October, which we'll figure out. And then on October 16th, will be the final chance for a public hearing for anyone to offer their feedback before council's adoption. Thank you for that, committee member. And being no further business for the committee at this time, we will adjourn and go back to city council. Is there a recess, or do you want to go straight to briefings? Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you, Mr. Priti. And so, we're still working on the briefing zone?
You can either recess and get everybody settled again, or we can move into briefings. That's where we are, so.
Mr. President, you want to keep working or?
Keep moving.
We've got the transition.
Bring us back in.
We've got the transition.
All right, we'll, okay, we'll take a break to get everybody back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for being here.
Take recess for five minutes.
So we covered this briefing.
So we covered this briefing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have one additional briefing today, and this is the continuation of our monthly briefings regarding the preparation for the FY24 budget, which of course we will present on April 17th as we go forward. Today's briefing focuses in two areas. One is on our enterprise funds, and the other is an update from our municipal advisors regarding our capital funding strategies as we move forward on the capital plan. You'll recall that that was kind of alluded to the last time they were here and spoke with you as well. So in a few seconds, I'm going to ask folks to come up on the enterprise funds. Just want to give a little bit of background here with this. So our enterprise funds differ from our other funds, if you will, such as the general fund. So on the enterprise side, these are things that are operated business-like, which means most importantly that they are intended to be self-sufficient, meaning the users of whatever the service is cover the costs associated with it, not typically the general taxpayers through their, through the tax collections that we have in other instances. We have a number of those, and there will be three of them we're talking about here today, which is the Stormwater Fund, the Civic or the Burgland Center Civic Facilities Fund, and the Parking Fund. You'll note as we go through this that two of these three operate in exactly the manner that I just mentioned, which is the users of the, the users or the recipients of the service are the ones paying the costs, both the operating costs and the capital costs associated with that. Of course, as you all know, the Burgland Civic Center does not operate that way. It operates that way for the most part, but there is still a local subsidy that covers both some of the debt expenditure as well as some of the operating costs. And so each year, as we get ready to present the budget, we come forward and talk with you about the, the current condition of these enterprise funds, a conversation about changes in any kind of rates or fees associated with those, as well as a bit of a glimpse of, in many instances, the capital projects that they're working on with, with each of these. And so we'll go in the order that they're presented. Folks will present the information, obviously, take any questions that you might have. Then when they're finished, then we'll switch over to David Rose with Davenport, who will then walk us through the capital funding strategy so that you understand how we're progressing toward the CIP. So with that, I think Ian and Michael, you're going to be first with the Stormwaters. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Morning, Mayor Lee, council members. Michael Venable, representing Stormwater, currently is our acting division manager. So just kind of going over our, kind of going over the highlights for the fiscal year 24 budget. As most of you all are aware, this is the second year of a six-year phased increase. This increase is going to look very similar to what it did in fiscal year 23 with a 15 cent per billing unit increase. What that kind of represents to the citizens is roughly under a dollar a month, or on average about $10 annually. This is going to help represent about an increase of $1.1 million in revenue for the utility to help kind of offset some of our increase in spending and some of our plans for additional capital projects. You'll also see some of the change in our revenue may be represented by some annual increase of impervious surface that is due to development. So just a couple of the broad level highlights. Currently, our capital projects, our capital improvement projects exceed about $300 million. That includes what we would consider our traditional kind of gray Stormwater infrastructure, as well as some of our natural projects. From an additional revenue source standpoint, as most of us are aware, there was a slowing of different types of revenue sharing opportunities, as well as some supply chain decreases. That meant that we only borrowed about $2 million in bonds. In order to kind of catch back up with both revenue sharing and our current capital spending plan, we increased our bond borrow in fiscal year 23 to 4 million. Now, that was just kind of a little bit of a pendulum of what we normally do. Three year, or 3 million per year is kind of our, our average. And as of right now, in the foreseeable future, we are forecasting that is going to be our annual borrow. But we're closely monitoring a couple different changing factors. Some of those are the fact that the cost of doing work is just significantly more expensive. So the ability to do the work that we have planned and stay under our current debt service is going to have to mean that we're going to continue to look for alternative revenue sources, potentially even the idea of maybe increased bond expenditures in the future. Working with VDOT in particular, they have accelerated some of these backlog projects. So that's where we may look to kind of leverage some of these bond sources as well. With that, we also plan to contribute some of our operating budget to our capital projects. So last fiscal year, fiscal year 23, we had planned for roughly half a million dollars, $550,000. Currently, that's on track to be contributed to our capital projects. That basically gets contributed as we spend, obviously spending through our bond dollars first, and then allocating our operating budget secondarily. The plan is to continue to do that, at least for the next couple of fiscal years, the contribution of roughly a half a million dollars to our traditional capital projects. We're also looking right under another half a million dollars, or 365,000 currently planned for fiscal year 24. That's going to look to go towards some of our other research capital projects. Some of those are some ongoing stuff with the USGS and our participation or precipitation gauges that also kind of helps determine some of the current quality of our river and our contributing tributaries. And then as well as some ongoing work with the University of Maryland Baltimore campus for some PCB studies, some ongoing PCB study. And that is basically a summary of our fiscal year 24 budget. Is there any questions?
Sure.
Thank you, Michael. Could you talk just briefly or maybe highlight some of your current capital projects that are underway?
Sure, yeah. We, we currently have a project that is physically in construction in kind of the northwest area. That should be wrapping up here in the next couple of months, and that is kind of in the Sunrise Oakland area. That, talked about that project previously, and that is a pretty big capital project for us. We are currently in the process of getting a second project out for bid in the northeast area, 24th Street, kind of behind the Dairy Queen. That one's pretty exciting for us because it's a little bit unique as a pilot project for some pervious concrete or pervious paving that actually resists runoff and absorbs and reinfiltrates some of the stormwater that comes on the surface of the road. So that is upcoming. And then in the fiscal year 24, we have several projects throughout town. We probably have about five that we plan to be in construction in the fiscal year 24. Couple just rough locations or street intersections, another one in the northwest Cove and 22nd area. That one is pretty large, and we're looking to kind of cooperate with the Water Authority on some additional work. Downtown Salem and First Street is currently undergoing the last final phases of design. That is a pretty major undertaking, a lot of utility conflicts. Particularly, we're going to realign some of the underground culverts that are under downtown. And again, like I said, a lot of realignment of existing utilities, particularly partnering with the Water Authority again with the combination and the improved hydraulics of some of their potable water downtown. We have ongoing a Glade Creek stream restoration project over near kind of the Vinton Town Line, and that currently is under construction, and we're hoping to kind of work on that through the entirety of fiscal year 24 with the improved renovations, the one-way, and some plantings in the next growing season. Just a couple that are kind of popping out there that you'll see towards the end of the fiscal year, Narrows Lane, Victoria Caldwell, West Fork Carbons partnered with the airport over off of Barnes Avenue to do a small stream restoration there. And then a second phase of what we call the kind of war branch improvement, or as you guys know, the former Ramada site. So with the removal of the Ramada, there was the existing concrete lined channel there. We are going to lay that out and get it, that, that location a little bit more natural.
Thank you.
Ms. Moon?
Thank you. You were very informative. I'm impressed. I love it. Mentioning, when you mentioned the restorations, do you have anything on when you'll be doing the Horton Creek, working in that area up in Narrows and 24th Street over at the Goodwill? You may not. I didn't know if you did or not. I know that's part of our Kiwanis, and that's why I was asking, our nature park.
So this is when we did just recently sign the agreement with the VDOT for that project. So the next step would be going out and getting a contractor or consulting, engineer consultant to help with design of that work. So that's expected to get underway this summer. So certainly the design work, I'm sure a construction frame that may be pushed into FY25, but the design work, we definitely want to make sure we're working on that and keep moving forward with Kiwanis and that project.
Right, okay. And also, you mentioned alternate, alternate revenue sources. Would you kind of follow a bit more on that, explain?
Sure. So we've, we've done a lot of work with FEMA and VDEM. That has been a pretty attainable source here recently, particularly with some of our restoration projects. SLAF grants is something that we continue to pursue. And then anything else that kind of continues to come up. We have a team that's getting pretty well-versed at reaching out and communicating with different state and federal agencies, and that is what we're looking to continue to leverage, which actually here recently has provided a bigger match than, than even something like the VDOT, traditional kind of revenue sharing. So, you know, we're currently looking at, at a couple of different opportunities right now to help fund some of the, the cost gap that we have to replace the low water bridge at Wiley Drive. As you guys are probably aware, that there was a Congress allocation, but that still leaves us about $1.3 million short of that, of that current project estimate, which potentially means that by the time we get under construction is probably going to represent a little bit bigger of a gap, so.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Ms. Trish Redbord?
I'm not sure who would answer this question, but on the research piece that the University of Maryland would be doing, can they do any research on the Evan Springs and that watershed? Or, or is that already something that's been done? Mr. Cowell, do you know if we've already done that, or can they do some research on that?
As far as what research they can do, I'll defer to Michael. In terms of Evan Springs, you know, there's nothing in the current planning process that we have as a part of that assessment. I don't know if there's been work in that area previously. I know there's been, you know, some, obviously, there's some floodplain issues and stuff, but in terms of water quality, I don't know that we've done anything with those, and I don't know if this project would do that or not, and I'll let, let them answer that.
Yes. For the PCB work, there is three segments that specifically have DEQ water standards, or I guess you'd call it total maximum daily loads related to PCBs. So that's the Ronoc River itself, Tinker Creek, and Peters Creek. So those are the three that UMBC is focusing their work on, is the one that there's a state water quality standard we're trying to meet.
Have they done any research already? I mean, does it already exist? Because you know they're having discussions and working with a consultant. So I'm just wondering if that, that preliminary work has already been done about the concern for flooding. I think we're hearing a lot of that. So maybe we could address that early?
Yeah, I think we, you know, any, any issues associated with, with flooding in terms of the hydraulics or those kinds of things, we can address those in Evan Spring. This particular study is really focused on, on a pollutant, on PCBs, which are not known to be present in that area. So that's why the two wouldn't fit.
They're two, they're, they're two separate things. I just thought when you said research, I was thinking maybe we could do some research on that, but, but that would be a separate issue entirely. Okay.
All right, go ahead.
We will, with that, we'll switch over into parking, I believe will be our next part of this. So Brian's going to kind of lead through this discussion on the parking enterprise.
Good morning again, city council.
Good morning.
And I'm going to defer to Robin Shawn for civics Burgland Center.
Oh, sorry. Helps them to go in the right order.
Come on down, Robin.
Come on down.
Just because I turned the page too fast, so.
Welcome, Robin.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, and members of city council. So as you can see, our operating subsidies increased a little bit over $250,000 this year for FY24. Part of that is filling vacant positions that were pre-COVID levels. We still have about four positions that we need to fill in order to be back up to full operations. Our utilities increased by about $85,000. The operations expense increased due to deferred maintenance, and a lot of that has to do with the ice rink and the Coliseum. Some of the LED lights that we installed about seven years ago as one of our capital projects. projects, the efficacy of those lights is starting to deteriorate, so we're replacing those one by one. And then the ice rink itself is in great condition. We just need to start replacing the glass and some of the operational things that keep that maintained. Our, I have to take these off, sorry. Our debt service, I'm sorry, our facility and parking fees are going to be used to cover contracted security. We now have overnight security to protect the building because we were the victims of vandalism and theft over probably the last two years, and the expense of replacing those things and repairing them had gotten exorbitant, so we now have overnight security. Our debt service increased just a little bit over 150,000 dollars. Total Civic facilities budget is about 14 million, which is an increase over FY23 of about 1.6 million. Concert tours are beginning to increase, but the costs have risen significantly. A lot of that has to do with travel, transportation, artist fees, management fees, everything's increased since COVID. The same can be said for comedy, Broadway, and trade and consumer shows. Some of our trade and consumer shows have struggled a little bit because they're having trouble getting vendors to come back on. They're not at full capacity yet, but we feel like in FY, I mean, in calendar year 24, people will start filling that back up, and we'll see 100% participation. We also have the Bella Vista Room. If you are aware of the annex just above the Special Event Center, there's a fourth floor that is set vacant for about 20 years. It was becoming a storage room, and thanks to our shuttered venue operators grant and some capital funding, we've been able to move forward with renovating that room to make it a stellar banquet room. It's going to be so beautiful, the views are incredible up there. We were hoping to open in July, but due to some supply chain issues with the mechanical system, it looks like it's going to be around September 1st before they hand over the room. We're already start to marketing that, so reunions, wedding showers, banquets, that sort of thing will take place, and we all hope to have you all up there, part of the grand opening or for a preview before we open it to the public. And then Burglum Center, assumed management operations of the Star City Cafe, which is on the first floor of the municipal building. Revenues and expenses are wash because we're not quite sure what to expect taking over that room. Obviously, there are expenses that we've been trying, that we've been conservative with, but as far as revenues go, we're trying to keep the pricing down there, not at the Burglum Center level. You know, concessions in arenas and theaters are quite exorbitant, but we want people to use our Star City Cafe every day. We have an extensive menu, and we're looking forward to getting that open, too. So we budgeted expenses and revenues out of wash this first year, hoping that we're going to break even, and then years, subsequent years will be making a profit. I'm sorry if I talk too fast. Do you all have any questions?
Robin?
Yes.
When do you anticipate the Star City Cafe opening?
Our goal now is May 1st. We are just waiting for some of the larger equipment to come in, and there are some electrical issues with regard to having enough circuits to provide what we need in there for the grill and the deep fryer. Any other questions?
Thank you.
No, Mayor, I do have a question. I'm just pondering it. I'm looking at your operating subsidy where it increased from the 258,000 over to the 771, and I was trying to do my math. Is the increase of that 500 and some based on the bullet points that you have under that that makes up the increase?
It's just increasing by the 258,000. Our subsidy's been somewhere around 520,000.
That's what I needed, okay. Okay, just the way it read, I was just kind of like, it went from the 258 to the 700 instead of the 500 already being there.
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. And this time, I actually will ask Brian to come up now and talk about the parking enterprise.
Morning again, City Council. They save the best for last, you know how much everybody loves to talk about parking, so I'm going to jump right into it here. Daily operations are stabilizing, good news. We're experiencing a stabilization in the parking fund. We're projecting revenues to increase 8.33% for FY24. Some of this is involved with, as Bob mentioned, the security expense. Us, like, similar to Robin, we also contracted out for armed security within all of the parking garages. We have armed security from 5:00 PM to 8:00 AM, seven days a week. So we just wanted to make sure everybody felt safe in the city within the parking garages. That cost is 186,000 dollars. So that's a huge expense for us. So getting into expenditures, we are seeing inflationary expenditure increases. Some of those are, you know, AEP or power, lighting, all those types of things. Cost of goods, hard goods have gone up. All of our equipment costs have gone up. We do have a new parking contractor, which, you know, they're just doing a fantastic job. SP Plus has just been just a great partner and really forward-thinking, and we see some exciting times coming in the future here. There was an increase to the management fee, you know, as we chose the best company in the country, a little bit, little bit more expensive. There's an investment in new technology to enhance the customer experience. As we begin to get to more towards text-to-pay, as we get to more automated ways of payment, and we get away from people putting cash into a machine and those types of things, those all come with expense increases. And then maintenance upgrades to the facilities. We recently did a parking office renovation. If you happen to be over there, it just looks fantastic. Getting ready to put the new floor down, completely renovated the parking office. Our next slide here is our capital maintenance projects, what we've completed. Power washing and painting a tower and center in the square garages. We pressure washed Tower. I don't think it had ever been pressure washed in 30-something years, so we took on that task. It was quite an undertaking. Not only did we do that, we did a preparatory for painting. We painted the entire inside of Tower Garage, and boy, what a job that is, and it just looks fantastic. You know, that, coupled with the escalator project, they took the escalators out, we put beautiful stairs in, just, and we also did a, there's a shared ownership of that building, if you're aware, and we did, in conjunction with the ownership, a complete elevator modernization in Tower Garage. In the city was, had a percentage that we had to incorporate into that, into that project. So just Tower Garage is really looking fantastic. And for the, for really the only Class A office space in the city, you know, from a parking fund enterprise look snapshot, that should really be the place where we put a fair amount of our money, because it brings, it brings economy into the city. Also in there, we're swapping out the LEDs, and that should be done by the end of April, so we can actualize a little bit of cost savings there. What we have planned coming up, elevated modernization project in center in the square garage, and then we will have the final of our five-year structural and restoration plan for all seven garages. And we also, this year, will be purchasing a brand-new scrubber, sweeper. We talked about supply chain issues. It'll take us about a year to get, to get that in, but it is what it is. Future outlook, so we are seeing an uptick in revenues due to post-COVID recovery and increased traffic downtown, which is a great thing, you know? It's good to see people back, you know, especially from a parking standpoint. I remember when we stopped enforcing, and there was nobody downtown, and it was, it was a hard thing to swallow, but you know, we're starting to see it really become robust again, especially in center in the square and market garages. We also see an industry-wide increase of about 15% growth year-over-year in 2023. So the whole market is coming back as well. We'll also be doing preventative restoration and maintenance repairs, RFP for structural engineering firms. So we're at the end, like I said, of that, of that contract that we have, and we'll have to put an RFP out on the street to get another five-year plan for structural repairs, and that'll be coming in FY24. We also, because people are coming back in such high amounts, we are going to do a parking study. We're going to anticipate doing a new parking study. Debt service will decrease by 300,000 in the year FY27, so that's always a positive. The less debt we have, that means the more that we can put back into the structural repair of our garages, because as Bob mentioned, we generate all of our own revenues and we cover all of our own expenses. And the reason we do that is to put the money back into the capital repairs of the garages. So excited to deliver that report, open up for any questions that you might have. All right, Bryce.
Thank you, Brian. It's been great to see all the progress being made in the garages. Can you talk a little bit about efforts you're making to clarify with the public how Park Roanoke is different from Premier Parking? Because there are a lot of issues that have come up about the privately-owned Premier Parking. And the benefits that Park Roanoke offer are much better for the consumer and people parking downtown, but there's a lot of confusion about, people assume that the city owns and manages Premier Parking, which we do not.
Well, I can tell you from the emails that I have to respond to, I'm apologizing on behalf of the City of Roanoke sometimes for Premier Parking and for other parking structures that the city does not own and does not manage. But we've worked closely with DRI, especially Tina at DRI, and we have a whole entire page dedicated just to what Park Roanoke is, and that's on the DRI website, and we have a link to that on our Park Roanoke website. So, yeah, we communicate, and we try to get that communication out to the, to the citizens that Park Roanoke is completely different than Premier Parking. Premier Parking owns a lot of your surface lots downtown, and there's also another garage located downtown that we do not operate near the train station. So we are the preferred vendor from DRI for Amtrak at Tower Garage. So we are recommending that if citizens and guests come into the city, that they go to the Tower Garage to park their cars if they're going to take the train out. So we will continue that messaging, Councilman Cowell.
You go to the Tower Garage?
Yes, sir.
What about the Gainesboro?
Gainesboro's a little bit further, I believe.
Over the, it's over the bridge, but Tower's on down.
Yeah, Tower's only about a block and a half over. It's close enough that that would be the preferred, preferred garage.
Okay.
Okay. Take a lot of luggage, you got to.
Yeah.
Brian, one of the things that our biggest expense is going to be that armed security. I know that I've heard from many of our citizens that security is one of the biggest reasons why they don't use the garages. So is there a reason, or is there a way to make that more public? Are you guys going to do any announcements or anything like that?
Sure, we could, we could definitely engage that communication piece. We wanted to, we just started it in November, December, so we wanted to kind of get in the door a little bit and see. We've just seen a tremendous success, the amount of vagrants and the amount of, you know, unhoused that were living in our stairwells due to COVID, due to, just due to life. We, you know, we've been able to manage that down to really acceptable conditions. And, you know, there is a fee, you know, an increase in our fee to cover that cost, and, you know, we hope to plan to expand that a little bit, even into the next year, so. It's been a tremendous help for everybody, and we continue to go forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that you've increased it for the armed security. Which parking garages? Is it for all seven, or is it just the ones around the dam?
Yes, it's all seven garages, so it is an armed officer. They have the ability to arrest, they have the ability to bar, they have the ability to trespass, and they basically travel from garage to garage and the surface lots, and they monitor and walk the entire stairwells and the levels of the garage.
And how much increase is it for the monthly parking fee for those that are parking monthly?
It's going to be at about an average of about $5 for monthly parkers.
And what are they paying now?
It depends on which garage they're in, because we prorate different garages depending on geographic location, but on average, it'll be about a $5 increase.
Across the whole seven?
Right.
Okay.
And that just barely covers our 186,000, it's about a $37,000 gap above that, but again, we plan on to expand that security piece a little bit, so it'll be a wash basically when it comes to revenue and expense on that.
And so the parking fund itself is self-sustainable right now?
Parking fund is self-sustainable. We have, we have a decent reserve. You know, when we look at the capital projects that the company suggests to us, they came back at $2 million a year on structural maintenance repairs. As much as I'd like to have Bob raise those parking fees to be able to accommodate that, he'd probably run me out of town if that were the case. So we have to kind of curtail that to what we can afford, which is, you know, we do on average about between 700,000 to a million dollars a year in repairs.
Yeah, well, I'm glad to hear that we should see a decrease in our debt service in the next, I guess, three to four years.
Yeah, and FY27, we see a tremendous amount coming off, and we've seen more come off, and as long as we don't build another garage, we'll be able to put some more money back into the current ones that we have.
Right, right. I like that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Senator Jones?
Hey, Brian. My question is, will people still be able to pay cash at the garages as well?
Yeah, people can still pay cash. They can do a pay-on-foot station. You know, we are, we're entertaining ideas to go down the future of text-to-pay, which if you go to any urban city at this point, that's basically the way it is. You drive in, you can either scan a little QR code, or you don't even need that. If you have a phone, you don't need, all you have to do is text a number, and it'll shoot you back a payment option. So that's what's coming in the future. You know, we've been looking at issues with center in the square, ingress, egress, which happens to be, we've gotten tremendously better on that, by the way. But, you know, we're looking, we might go gateless there, you know, and that will involve ways of text-to-pay. However, we'll always leave an option to pay with cash.
Thank you.
You know, as that demographic shrinks, you know, the modem of payment is changing, but we understand the need for a demographic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We got two questions. First, on the study, so I haven't seen a parking study before. Will this be factoring out people like increased uses by either residency, if people are returning to work for office use, or if it's related to just increased, you know, business, visits as it relates to downtown?
Yes, yes, and yes.
But what else will be included generally in this study?
We'll look for, for usage, and we'll look for empty spaces. We'll look for the amount of people parking in spaces at certain times, flow-through, those types of things, so we just get to see the amount of usage in the spaces downtown.
And then my second question, what does, what's the average cost for the elevator modernization?
Average cost, sides of the tower because it was extensive, which, that whole project was a couple million, ours was, cost was 270,000 because we're shared ownership and we have a smaller percentage of the expense on that one. On average, $300,000 to $400,000 per elevator.
And is this just to make them ADA compliant or safe?
No, it's basically changing out all of the interior mechanics, all of the ropes and the lines and the electronics in the cab, refreshing the cab and the floor and all the instrumentation. They're all ADA accessible now, but, you know, there's a piece that goes with fire safety on all that. As you know, if somebody gets stuck in an elevator, there's a fire safety component to that.
So it's basically a new elevator, but it's an old elevator?
Yes, taking an old elevator, making it a new elevator. That's correct.
Thank you. I don't know, I remember years ago, there's some YouTube guy that just like takes videos of elevators, and for some reason, the parking garages ones are ones they focus on.
Yes, Diesel Ducey, who has been a Star City shout-out here in the city, and he has a place called Elevator Tours, has made one of our elevators famous on YouTube with over a million views of one of our elevators, which is amazing.
Something. All right, thank you.
Mayor, I have one other question. Going, piggybacking on what Councilmember Priti just said, with regards to the monthly parkers, what would you say the percentage is pre-COVID and those that are up to date now that have come back in?
Sure, that's a great question. So a couple of our biggest pieces of business did not come back to the city. You know, Anthem was our biggest customer, and they have not come back to the city. We've had a couple other large monthly parking business contracts that have come back a little bit, but haven't come back anywhere near to that amount. Our Anthem cost was a $400,000 hit to revenue, and that was a tremendous loss to the parking fund. So if y'all can find somebody to come in and take that building over, we would love to sell them parking passes.
So does this, so would the burden fall on the residents who park monthly? Do they park monthly, or they just have a set?
We have residential parking, and theirs is going up by $10. It's only $30 currently, and if you do a nationwide market basket, it's tremendously undervalued for what monthly parking is, and we only have a small amount of residential parkers in downtown, just really small. It doesn't even tip the needle for us as far as revenue.
So the main ones is the large businesses?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be businesses for monthly parkers.
Yeah. Thank you.
Do city employees get a discount for parking in the lots?
I'm going to defer that question to Mr. Cowell.
No. Again, because this is an enterprise, it is.
No. Again, because this is an enterprise, it is self sustaining. And so all customers that use the, the garages and, and the on-street parking are all addressed in, in the same manner.
Do the residents have one fee and the city employees have another fee?
The residents have a, a fee all other, all other users. So anybody that parks hourly or monthly has the same rate. That is different than the residential rate. The residential rate, as Brian said, is, is discounted even further. And that, I think, goes back probably to a history when we were trying to stimulate residential development in downtown. So the redevelopment of business, redevelopment of buildings in downtown for residential use by code don't require, there's no parking required for them. And so in effect, our garages and on-street parking become the parking for those. And so I think that's what caused the, the residential rate to differ from the regular monthly rate. But any employee that, that pays to be in the garages on a monthly basis would pay the same as any other resident that, or any other person from a business or otherwise pays in that, in that regard. But all of those are in excess of what the residential monthly parker pays to be in there.
Thank you.
I have a follow up. It's potentially for Tim, because as I was looking at this section of code, not to date months ago, because I just love looking at it. As it relates to residential parking and how we can do decreased fees for people who are living downtown, do we have any authority or ability to offer some kind of decreased rate if someone, I know if you live downtown, you have to prove, prove that you live downtown, show some copy of something and you get the decreased rate. But for people who work downtown that make maybe minimum wage or potentially less as servers for restaurants, if there's anything we can do to extend some kind of reduced rate to them, because I know that, you know, they're, I remember waiting tables downtown years ago and just moving my car every few hours if I had to, or the, the monthly cost that they have to bear. And if we would have some authority to look at that, but only as it relates to people that are making under a certain amount of money and if they work in the area, the same way that we have to give proof for residential people who live in the downtown area.
Tim, I can answer that question.
Good.
So thank you. Great question. We've already, we've already predicted that type of question would come up. And we've been working on what's called the Service Industry Parking Program. And we hope to present it to you, City Council, at some point this year. And it, it speaks to exactly what you're talking about, Councilman Priti, is offering a reduced parking rate at certain garages, and I emphasize certain garages, that would be for people that are working in the service industry or any type of merchant industry downtown that meets, meets a certain economic criteria. So we're still working out the bugs and the nuances and I'll have to deal with Tim's office on that and how we validate those types of things. So it would offer a reduced monthly parking rate for certain garages.
That's good news.
And of course, the, and the other alternative, of course, with that as well is that the employer certainly could cover those costs for the employee as well.
Thank you. So far today, we've answered most of the complaints I typically get related to parking. So I'll let you know if I have any more.
All right, do you have any questions?
All right. That, that is it for this. So thank you all. We're going to transition now to David who, with Davenport, who's going to walk you through the continuation of the discussion we had previously on our CIP, this time focused on the, the funding strategies that will be used as we proceed with implementing what is in the CIP.
Vice Mayor, members of council, again, David Rose. I was here two weeks ago and I indicated that I would be back after working with staff. And so here I am. I will not be too long this morning, but would like to present to you some of our thoughts and ideas and some recommendations. So with that, all of you should have a copy of what will be up on the screen, identical. And again, I just have a few pages to, to run through. Let me say again, I'd be remiss if I did not, that working with your staff, city manager, finance director and his staff, and all have been super helpful. So we are here today. If you look here on the overview, we have been talking about the multi-year, five-year capital improvement program that we have been advising you on from a financial perspective for the last five years. And now we're focused in on this rolling five-year program on specifically the 2023 year that we're in right now. I would point out that we not only look at each year, but again, we look at five years, we look at 10 years so that we make sure if there's any surprises. So indicated just a few minutes ago, when some of that debt will drop off from the parking, we have a similar situation where we follow what's going to happen over each year of the five-year and then pass that. So in doing all that, I had the good fortune of listening to at the last meeting and getting up to speed on all the various projects that are being talked about and have been approved in your historic multi-year program. And what has come to us, no surprise here, is that there are so many projects at a time when not only there's inflation, but also there really is a dearth of, of contractors out there, of supply chain issues as well. So what we're finding is that projects really are moving slower nationwide, statewide. And again, it's just the way it is. That said, I feel like we have a good handle on making sure that every project that you expect to get done will get done as it's necessary. But we're also making sure that, or recommending that we don't borrow money too far in advance and just sit there with those debt service payments. And that's one of the things we're going to talk about in a few minutes. So in our recommendation for some strategies. One of those things that we also look at is your self-imposed financial policy guidelines. The last time I was here, I made a point of indicating that the city has very, very strong credit ratings. I do not provide those credit ratings. Outside independent agencies do that. They're constantly monitoring us. And so they look at, not only do we have a structurally balanced budget or budgets, which we do as a city, but also are we in compliance with all of our policies? And we are. But one of those things that we know is that some of those policies can be a little bit tight. And one of those policies we'll talk about is just the sheer debt service relative to the overall expenditures and revenues of the, of the city in a given year. So we're going to recommend in our policy strategy that we give ourselves a little extra room. And we'll talk about how we can do that without delaying any projects. Lastly, I indicated that the rating agencies are changing somewhat in their policies. So we're going to recommend, I know it's been introduced, a fixed cost policy. I told you the last go around, you fare very well in that regard. And again, we're going to recommend that we implement that in, in the near future. So we keep talking about this multi-year CIP. You look up on the screen there and in your document, you can see that we have roughly $215 million of debt planned over the next several years. That includes 28 and a half million of what we'll call tax-supported projects, and then another $4 million of the stormwater, which is that, that, again, enterprise-based, it's the user base. So collectively, for economies of scale, we recommend that we borrow those at one time. They both have the same backing, which is the, the city's full faith in credit. However, the stormwater is separate because again, it has dollars coming in from user fees, if you would, which was alluded to earlier by one of your staff folks. So what we're recommending is that we borrow the full 32 and a half million, but we believe, working with staff, that we can responsibly hold that borrowing off for basically about six months. Instead of being a late spring borrowing, we'd like to make that some sort of a mid-fall borrowing and move that consecutively with all of the future capital programs. And when we do that, we're going to see in a moment that we're going to literally relieve some pressure on one of your ratios, which is that debt service to expenditures. And we mean by debt service, again, it's the annual payments of the fully supported taxes. And at the same time, we're recommending that if we move in a varsity shift, if you would, to the fall for the next several years, we can make some real strong improvements in this ratio. In addition, one thing we've recommended is that starting with not this '23 fiscal year, the, the amount that 32 and a half, but starting in '24 fiscal year through '26, and we can change this year to year, we're going to recommend that we scale back the borrowings by $5 million a year. So again, we're not deferring the projects, but we know we're sitting on a lot of, we'll call it, existing bond proceeds, as well as the planned bond proceeds here. So that if we need to, we can accelerate projects. But at the same time, we have dollars sitting there available to take care of the projects that you have already approved in your previous multi-year CIP. So the impact of doing that graphically here, if you can see, the dark green is your existing debt service, but your light green is that proposed debt over the next several years. And it basically doesn't go above an eight and a half percent threshold. And that's important because the maximum debt service here, and by the way, we build in certain assumptions in terms of borrowing costs. Hopefully, we're being conservative. We have in the past. But we build that in and the high level or high watermark is about 35 and a half million dollars out towards the end of the decade, basically in 2030. But if you go to the next page, if we did not incorporate this proposed strategy, you'll find that we are literally bucking right up against our self-imposed policy. So we're closer to nine and a half percent at that point, almost, not quite. And that's basically a little over $3 million more in debt service in that, if you want to call it, that most difficult year. So by saving some three plus million of debt service, it really has an important impact, not only on future budgets, but also on our ratios. So what does that do? That gives us some play, if you would, if something happens that we're not expecting, gives us some of that ability to weather unforeseen circumstances. And on top of this, we also know that every year, we get an opportunity to revisit this. So all we're suggesting now is let's put into play something like this. It starts this program on the right, if you want to call it, on the right foot. And I think it's something that, again, if some surprises happen, we can always go back and do it as we have. But again, this is again, for us, a way to give you some more cushion. So that said, you have another ratio, which is debt as a percent of assessed value. That is very much in line. As you can see there, it basically doesn't go above two and a half percent, and your policy's at 4%. So you're well under that particular benchmark. So it's one that, again, doesn't give us much pause at all, and we don't tend to worry about that one nearly as much. So basically in closing, we would say this, you have expended in the '22 fiscal year that we did last year, a small amount of those bond proceeds. Again, projects are moving slower. You have a whole lot of projects. It's just the nature of the spending nationwide. And Roanoke looks just very much like that as well. Your fiscal year 2023, the borrowings we have, I use the term de minimis for the next several months. Again, we are not worried in any way that we're going to be behind the eight ball. We know the dollars are there if certain projects need to be moved very quickly and pay some dollars down. Again, we're thinking that third bullet, delaying this debt service, especially while interest rates are still good, yes. But at the same time, if it was at where we were a year ago or a year and a half ago, when we were able to borrow in the 2% range, we would have a little bit different tack perhaps on this, on this. We might even still have the same approach, but we would monitor it that much more closely. So again, that fourth bullet point, we believe we can ease off the amount of borrowing to keep the pressures down. And then finally, our thinking is we will probably be back to you sometime late summer, maybe early fall, depends about talking about getting going with that fall financing. Because anytime we do something like that, it typically takes us anywhere from 45 to 90 days to, to do it all and pull it all together. But we will talk again, as we keep in regular contact with the rating agencies. It is our hope that we can get them to come visit us, particularly this fall. They were planning to come when COVID struck. And of course, that took all of that out for you and everyone else. We just feel like we're not in any way worried about keeping the very strong credit ratings. But what we do want to do is let them see all the things that are happening in the city so that if and when the bad times come, and inevitably, it's a, it's a pendulum for all of us, we want them to know how strong and how critical the city thinks about its overall debt, how it thinks about its balanced budgets, economic development, citizens, et cetera. So we like to have them be able to put into their records a site visit, which is of course, so, so much more than you can do by anything telephonically. So with that said, I'm happy to ask the city manager and staff to maybe clarify anything or make some other comments. I'm happy to answer any questions, Vice Mayor.
No, I think that kind of encapsulates sort of the approach that we're anticipating taking as we move forward into delivering on the CIP that has been presented over the last couple of meetings as well. So happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Questions from council?
No, no questions. I just have one comment. I think we do an excellent job with our, with our debt compared to our revenue and to keep it at 2.2% our debt ratio. I think you guys are doing an excellent job, actually.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rose. Appreciate the update.
Thank you. That concludes our, our briefing for, for today. So thank you.
All right. Then we are in recess until 2:00 PM for a closed meeting in the conference room.